Good morning everyone. These are some main points. More than that you cannot write also. So, it's still too much. That will give you some comparative view so. Instead of saying Nitya Yoga only since Planning Commission already we have told and many things you will. For you difficult to know all these things. So formation is same both are created by executive resolution. So this is how you find that similarity. There are some minor differences, differences that came. Chairman, Prime Minister is not ex-officio chairman. Here PM was ex-officio chairman. So it makes Prime Minister head, permanent head let's say. Permanent head means he will have his role in that but ex-officio means he has a formal role. Formal role, that will make real. So real role will be played by deputy chairman. But here the vice chairman, you know that. So will he speak his mind when Prime Minister is the head? Certainly not. So this, other members etcetera not much difference especially invited ministers part-time. They will be, they are the permanent members who will be the researcher, med sectors whatever you can say some other types of this that is not. Nitty gritty details needed more than this. And CEO and secretary. Now then you see the appointment by Prime Minister by cabinet. Then again it is let's say that so I will make circle wherever there is centralization of power. This is centralization of power, this is centralization of power. So. Prime Minister appoints so you know that all other cabinet members are not part of. The loop of that socio-economic development. So in a way when Nitya Yoga we say it is decentralization, it is also centralizing powers. Which is done in a such subtle way that ordinary people will not understand. Right, so this main role think tank, this is how, so they have similarity. It was also expected to work as a think tank, it is also to work as a think tank hardly there is any difference in that. So thereafter it is fifth point. Now power, this is another main let's say that the main difference if you talk in terms of substantial. So this is the main difference. There are some minor here and there things but this is the main difference let's say that in terms of powers. So Nitya Yoga has not been given the powers of allocate fund, determine any grant, plan grants etcetera. Disallow even supervise it has no power to supervise the schemes and programs implementation. And sanction, not sanction while implementation we told that. Any fund has been allocated and any state is implementing that. You should know that if it wants to have any change in that it will have to seek permission. Planning Commission can allow, can disallow. That is how we mean by here plan funds under implementation. So that is how it makes its a powerful body, means it becomes executive body. It makes Planning Commission executive body, a powerful body and since this is not it keeps. Keeps Nitya Yoga. Purely. A think tank. So since power is not given it will not exercise control, power was given it was the main cause for reason for. States let's say that complaining, so. Now inherently let's say that. So inherently it is having lots of advantage, this we say that. Inherently it is an institution of cooperative federalism. It is an institution of think tank also inherently we can say. And since we are talking about representation of states so there is governing council consisting of Prime Minister. Members especially invited and chief ministers, union territory. Administrators, subgroup panels, there are subgroup panel then team India. So these are all let's say that innovations. So. Innovative provisions and practices. Which make Nitya Yoga inherently an institution of cooperative federalism but if you takes it. The, this federal character was fulfilled through NDC but PC did not have. Any direct let's say representation of states hence inherently it was unitary, it is unitary body. It is a federal body. So this way you can write only depending on situation how much you have to write. Now it has taken national development agenda. Its main aspect is national development agenda which is nothing but replacement of five-year plan. In place of five-year plan it has national development agenda that is a type of perspective plan. Bottom-up approach and it undo let's say that centralized one size fits all. Approach which Planning Commission was known for but you should know that it has absence of a system of planning. You will tell that how we do not have a system of planning. So one positive aspects but then another negative aspect that is how it happens. Now already we have told all these things I don't have to tell much. Yes it established a system of planning and institutionalized planning process. This. Then next. I guess. Now another thing is location of office, interesting. So location of office is in Prime Minister office. And it submits report to Prime Minister but you should know that here. It had independent status of a secretariat, it has independent status of a secretariat. So no any other department exercise control under government of India business allocation rules. So that is how it has this status and submitted report to cabinet, not to Prime Minister. So status and outcome generally it is being said that it is high on rhetorics and low on performance although yes it is all known for. If something we can talk positive thing about Nitya Yoga it's cooperative federalism, competitive federalism. Some good reports it has submitted will tell that there are some good schemes also and it has promoted. It has also some success, success. Certainly it is a new institution so hence it is a new institutions it will have better record as of now. It has some good records which will talk when we'll take it separately. And Planning Commission will become more infamous because of these things and let's. But known for planning and working as independent think tank. Yes. So this is how we can tell about differences when we talk. And then finally we were saying, no, nothing. Yes.
Sir, point number eight, the location of office. It is also in case of DPR into setting and it is located in KMA.
Yes. Yes, I did not, yes, it is centralization. In fact Planning Commission used to hold its meeting in Bigyan Bhavan but Nitya Yoga holds its meeting in PMO. Right, so anyhow but these are some let's say that. When we write comparison, when we compare some let's say head to head so that way we see what we find. So we find some similarity and differences, isn't it? So if you take this think tank already you know that. Both are for socio-economic transformation and to some extent we can say that they have the same composition. And program evaluation so both have the responsibility of evaluating programs. And that is how there is a program evaluation office so Planning Commission had also program evaluation office and. Nitya Yoga has also set up program evaluation office. Prepare reports. On sectoral issues development devise strategies for socio-economic developments. Nineties onwards prospective planning, indicative planning, right, etcetera. And the last is. Objectives. Right, so some objectives. They will talk for growth, development. Transformation. This infrastructure development. People participation. You will not find much difference in when we talk about. Objectives of Planning Commission and. Yes, some objectives will be different simply because we have set up now and governor's era. But you should know that self-reliance, so self-reliance was also that time. Also nowadays we are promoting Atman. Because objectives will not change much. That time also you wanted to build a country, build nation, develop, grow, all these things today also we want to do and many things we have not yet achieved so objectives will not change much. Warding the way you devise the objectives, the way you tell the objectives, the terminology. The terminology will be different let's say you will talk today pro people, proactive, effective governance, good governance. So terminologies will change when we talk. But still let's say that since there was also self-reliance again we are talking self-reliance. And we told Indian way of development. So that way you should see that they have, they have lots of similarities between them but differences. Already we have mentioned the differences but now we were saying that you should not tell at first place. When you write difference, write the most important point, write the meaningful points. Don't start writing who appointed, he is appointed by this, he is appointed by that. They are just for page filling up, nothing else. So your points on difference should be this, the first, second, third, fourth, that point we are writing. Purely it is a think tank and an institution for cooperative federalism and it was a think tank as well as executive body. Nature, status, direct representation of state. That is the core characteristics we say that so when we compare to we compare with core characteristics. Rather than let's say peripheral characteristics. That is how the difference when people are writing the answer so they don't write the core things they write peripheral general. And that is how I was saying that for the first time candidate started writing Deepak Rawat as red good civil servant. It's okay, so what can people answer but he is a young fellow and he knows that he knows much about social media. Similarly let's say that someone is writing rank classification characteristics what? It is merit based, there is impartiality, there is neutrality, here rank classification characteristics. Anyhow, so that is what it makes difference between what content you write. So what we are saying is it's a think tank, approach is broad, bottom up. So very good reference you can give that is called power width, power over. So Nitya Yoga has this, it has to work with states, it will work with. States. Or ministry departments. It will work with, it was working over, so boss type. It is working over let's say that, states. So more of let's say that classical theory approach. So then let's mandate scope, it deals with all the fears of the state. So in Nitya Yoga has not been given that no you cannot do this, you can do this, it's not like that it deals with entire the fears of the state. External, internal, defense, security, whatever you can say that Planning Commission was not given this mandate. Especially related to defense, security, internal security, external affairs. So since today it is a globalized world so in that globalized world we cannot have a kind of segregation of that so if you read the paper cabinet paper of. Nitya Yoga so these things are written but more than that details you don't need to know. And so its mandate is broad, scope is broad, role is broad but if you see in case of Planning Commission it was narrow. You know that Niti, it is known as Niti. So what can happen, let's say Mahabharat's Niti or Sakuni's Niti. Cortilea's Niti also can happen, we don't know which idea they have but the question is Niti means policy. Right, so policy has a broader connotation, the policy has a broader connotation than planning. Right, and therefore let's say Nitya Yoga has a broader connotation means broader mandate. And Planning Commission has narrower mandate and then already this we have told that power exists. More than that you will not be able to write in any answer. So as far as differences are concerned it should be let's say ready. Should have a ready answer let's almost anyhow. So then let's say if we talk about Nitya Yoga. Since already we have told that so. Will not emphasize much, will focus more on working of Nitya Yoga. And question is expected on that. So far they have not asked any question related to national development agenda. It is just a matter of time that when they will ask. Although Nitya Yoga related questions have been asked. So Nitya Yoga has made planning in India in segments, that's a question. Right, so but we expect with this name a question. Similarly let's say bottom-up planning, especially decentralized planning so on this also Nitya Yoga role. As cooperative already asked again it can be, this is in general its evaluation, how Nitya Yoga has worked. Then criticisms that are. There are debates now that Nitya Yoga should incorporate some good practices of Planning Commission and India needs a system of planning if not Planning Commission. Means can planning be successful without system of planning. So this, and that is how it should end thereafter. So let's write on this, objectives. Objectives of Nitya Yoga. Although. Philosophically it is about finding. Finding Indian way of development. Indian way of development. But. It's, still it has been given. It has been given following objectives. Following objectives. First. Promoting, promoting transformation. Promoting transformation in society means transformation of the country. Next, to evolve a shared vision for national development. To evolve, to evolve a shared vision for national development. Next, to foster cooperative federalism. Foster cooperative federalism. Next, to develop mechanisms to formulate. Formulate credible plans at village level. Credible plans at village level. To work as a think tank to government. To tender advice. To bring innovation and change. Bring innovation and change. Next, to create a knowledge, a knowledge innovation. An entrepreneurial support system. Entrepreneurial support system. Next, to monitor and evaluate implementation of programs. Next. To promote innovations, innovations. Competitiveness. Good governance. Good governance. Therefore next Nitya Yoga means change a paragraph, Nitya Yoga has been given. Following four major activities. Major activities also known as functions of Nitya Yoga. Functions of Nitya Yoga. First, design policy and program framework. Design policy and program framework, next, foster cooperative federalism. Foster cooperative federalism. Monitor and evaluation, monitoring and evaluation. Monitoring and evaluation, next, think tank. Think tank and knowledge and innovation hub. Knowledge and innovation hub. Knowledge and innovation hub. Change the paragraph, therefore, Nitya Yoga has a very wide mandate. Very wide mandate, dealing with all the fears of the state. Anything, everything. Anything, everything from policy, design. Planning framework. To evaluation. Evaluation. Innovations. Innovation. Good governance. Good governance. Sinjin-centric administration. Citizen-centric administration. Bottom-up development. People participation. Innovation. Technology upgradeation. And mobilizing knowledge resources. Resources, hence it has a multi-facet role. It has a multi-facet role. Of first working as a think tank. Second, working as a research think tank. Working as institution of cooperative federalism. Next, institution for innovation. Innovation. Next, institution for program evaluation. Hence its approach should be power width. Power width rather than power over that it has to work with. Union, state, other stakeholders. It has to work with union, state, other stakeholders. Other stakeholders, sorry, other stakeholders. Holders, hence inherently. It represents a new characteristics. New characteristics different from Planning Commission. Planning Commission. It is expected to promote evidence-based policymaking. Evidence-based policymaking. And find out. Indian way of development. By mobilizing knowledge resources. It is said that. In India there are research and innovations. But. They are not recognized. And giving appropriate platform. Given appropriate platform. Therefore it is expected. Therefore, it is expected. It is expected that Niti Ayog will work as. A platform. So that research and innovation are. Interwoven. Interwoven through a platform. Which would help. Which would help in. Finding out Indian way of development. And promoting innovations. Promoting innovations. So, these things you should know that it has been given a multi-facet role and difficult to. Clearly write in one such answer when you are supposed to write or in here it is difficult to tell everything. But yes, you should write the main aspect, the major aspect. Which should consist of think tank, innovation, cooperative federalism. And bottom-up planning. This, these are the some aspects. Right, for the let's say, it has been, although it has not been given. It has not been given executive powers like planning commission. Planning commission in terms of power to allocate funds. Power to allocate funds for programs and schemes. Programs and schemes, but still it has some executive powers. Still it has some executive powers like first. It should, it should. Promote inter-ministerial coordination. Inter-ministerial coordination. At union level. To achieve desired objectives, desired outcomes on its mandate. To achieve desired outcomes. On its mandate, second. It should promote coordination. Between union and states and among states. Among states for. Promoting socio-economic development innovations. Innovations. And. Socio-economic development demands. Coordination among states. That's why it is an instrument of both cooperative and competitive federalism. Cooperative and competitive federalism. You should know that when you promote coordination between two or more executives. So, it becomes also a sort of executive function. Because ministerial coordination between union ministry. So, that role is given only to cabinet secretariat and cabinet secretary. Coordination between ministry departments, but Niti Ayog has also been given this role. Because whatever the mandates have been given to Niti Ayog, they cannot be achieved unless it has certain. Coordinated powers. So, these things can be considered as far as let's write now. National development agenda. National development agenda. This, and its comparison with five-year. Although. Twelve-five-year plan continued till 2017. And completed its term, but when. Nitiya was established, Nitiya was established in January 2015. In January 2015. It devised, it devised a new type of planning. New type of planning known as national development agenda. National development agenda. Replacing the old five-year plans. Replacing old five-year. Plan. National development agenda. National development agenda is a. Perspective plan, perspective plan, different from five-year plan. Different from five-year plan. That it has following characteristics. It has following characteristics. Again, we'll write with comparison. So. It consists of. Three years. Action agenda. Action plan. Seven years. Strategy. Fifteen years perspective. Visioned. Five-year plan. Which was annualized. So. Niti Ayog. Has come up with. Three years. Five years strategy. Yet to come with. So, it is yet to come with vision, that's a vision document. Let's say twelve-five-year plans, simply to write something. So. It is a kind of rolling plan also, the way P J P had the. Nature of this. So. Let's, it has three-year action plan, seven years strategy, strategy plan you can say, strategy paper you can say, whatever the strategy document you can say. And fifteen years of vision document, so this you should know a bit more on this. So, already let's say that government has brought this, then it was brought this. But it is yet to come up with this, but when it will come up? This vision document was supposed to, let's say, this national development agenda. Is aligned with sustainable development goals. So, sustainable development goals are achieved, to be achieved by 2030. So, when you have to achieve the, this sustainable development goal by 2030. And already we are in 2021. And so, let's say that when it will bring, maybe it will bring. We do not know, it will be in its pipeline. So, this. So, national development agenda is a type of, let's say, it's perspective plan, long-term plan. This is well fine, and it is like rolling up, it will go and roll up like say, if when it brought three years. Then it's on the basis of that, let's say five years means not seven years. It brought after just five years. And then, let's say it is yet to bring. It will have characteristics like indicative planning, bottom-up, will take indicative separately, so we'll tell what is indicative planning. Syndicated bottom diversity, already we have told this, you know that suitable for this kind of society which is globalized, liberalized. Where strict control and planning will not be successful when most of the investments come from private sector. So, suitable for welfare economy, but let's take that. Some more aspects, so. Whatever the point. Now, three years. And five years. National development agenda were formulated. Through. Participation. Of stakeholders. Stakeholders, hence a participative approach. And. Five years strategy. Agenda. Gives. Vision and mission. Various sectors. It also. Envisages for. Development. As Janandolan. It has mentioned like development as Janandolan. Hence. More open. Participate. Some features you should know of this, this. Janandolan, so it's envisages that development should be Janandolan, means it emphasizes on people's participation. That people should participate, encourages participation of also people. So. Next. Problems. So, problems with. National development agenda. So, if we say like this, that it is the main difference, let's say, when you have to write. National development agenda has its own advantage, but yes, at the same time, it has also its own flaws. Like it lack, so lack of a defined process. How Niti Ayub formulates three-year action plan? How it prepares five-year strategy agenda? And how it will prepare the vision document, it is not known. So, certainly it publishes the stakeholders, but the process that we told in case of planning. There is a planning process and it is in public domain, you know that how plan is made. You know that how the consultation start from local level to block, district, to state, to draft five-year plan, then open for public comment, then submitted to cabinet, then finally it is goes to, means it goes to N D C, then it is parliament. You have a system of plan in which you cannot have, let's say, pick and choose type of things. You will consult this stakeholder, you will not consult this stakeholder. Many a time it has been reported, although we cannot write it, that consultation is largely to R S S affiliated civil society. R S S affiliated think tanks, R S S affiliated, those, let's say, intellectuals and members. So, if you go into details of that, like say Subraminiam Panel recommendation and who are comes consulted? R S S member in R S S Sachas. So, yes, they are part of also consultation, but it gives you very sectoral view. By reading the paper, you cannot know that, although you can know you are so many stakeholders have been consulted. So, that kind of, let's say that, selective approach, you promise for a decentralized plan, but you plan in a centralized way. This, this you have to understand. So, like governments come to power through democratic way, but they rule on democratic way. They cannot come to power if there is no democratic way. This you should know. So, this you have to understand, the flaw. So, there was a defined mechanism, even if it is hierarchical. Even if it is hierarchical, but it is defined. And when there is a role of parliament, so it makes democratic. But let's say it is a centralized machinery, Niti Ayub plans, how it plans, and what are the machineries, etcetera, so those things are not, and states and local bodies consultation will not be there. It can consult one, two, three, four states, but certainly since process is not defined. So, that way, although it will hold its meeting, governing council meeting, but that is like N D C meeting, no defined system of plan evaluation, it is a major flaw. Like, how can you have five-year strategy agenda without evaluating three-year section plan? So, when you present the next plan, so you, there should be, let's say that, evaluation of the past plan, like say the way budget is presented. Since budget is presented, so economic survey you have to, since a legacy has been established, you cannot undo that. It is a very strong legacy of economic survey. So, similarly, let's say that, when you present a new plan, so old plan should be evaluated, simple. We don't have to rule, means we don't need a rule for that, so now, let's say, people do not know what happens to this, and then you come up with a new plan, so it never happened like say with planning commission. It will necessarily, even it will come with a midterm to after two and half years. It will give midterm appraisal, which was also presented before N D C, and then let's say that, keep. So, the difference between this plan and that plan, let's write further thereafter. Therefore, there are differences between, between national development agenda and past five-year plan. Past five-year planning system. If, if, the farmer, farmer means, past five-year planning system was centralized, but it had defined mechanism and process. On the other hand, national development agenda is a perspective plan, which is less centralized, more bottom-up. But so far, it does not have defined process and mechanism, means a system of planning. Although, national development agenda has become a planning framework, planning framework, which is the, which is one major function of planning, which is one major function of Niti Ayub. Under this national development agenda, Niti Ayub has, has, as a think tank, carried out research and submitted many such papers, submitted many such reports to government. Like on innovation, innovation, technology, arbitration, infrastructure, transportation, transportation, education, election, etceteras. But write the main things. So blindly you can write anything. Anyhow, by the time when, let's, you will get some idea how it is, so that is how it is, let's write further. These reports have very significant contribution. Contribution. Both he, let's say, generic term. And a very significant contribution. In innovative policy formulation, and also devising strategies. Strategy for overcoming, overcoming, development challenges. Development challenges. Like, government has formulated education policy, health policy, health policy, transportation policy, policy for arbitration, arbitration, innovation, etcetera. Under national development agenda, planning commission, sorry, Niti Ayub is also carrying out. Niti Ayub is also carrying out program evaluation. Program evaluation. For which it has set up monitoring and evaluation, development monitoring and evaluation office. Development monitoring and evaluation office. Evaluation office. Next, under this agenda, under this agenda, it is also carrying out outcome budgeting evaluation. Outcome budgeting evaluation of programs and schemes. Programs and schemes. For which it has devised outcome busting roadmap, 2017 and 18, in which sixty-eight ministry departments have been covered. It was sixty-eight, I guess. Sixty-eight ministry departments have been covered. Therefore, national development agenda is an innovative development in the field of planning in India for socio-economic transformation to achieve, achieve sustainable development goals by 2030. 2030. So, this is positive aspect. Its main purpose was to tell you national development agenda, but we have told the comparison also, you should not write the comparison unless it is asked. This you should remember after, right, when class is finished. Means when you write your main examination, so you should remember all these things. Otherwise, you know end up what you will do. What people do, so it becomes disadvantage. Anyhow, so, national development agenda is one such initiative, we have mentioned also in outcome busting that, and under this, it has published also many schemes, programs, etcetera, there is also, let's say, development monitoring and program evaluation office. It has also been set up, right? So, this way you can see that, let's write about, in brief you can write about development monitoring and evaluation office. Development monitoring and evaluation office. To achieve evidence-based policymaking. To achieve evidence-based policymaking as integral part of overall governance structure in India. Overall governance structure in new India. New India. It is important to be able to track performance. Track performance. Determine outcome. Determine outcomes to understand how well a scheme is performing. And to help diagnose. Diagnose reason, reasons for poor performance. Poor performance and generate recommendations for course corrections. Course corrections. So, that is what we can tell that. So, this way we finish, national development agenda, then we have to compare, comparison is also done. Is, is it a suitable replacement? Right, let's try that. It can be considered as a suitable replacement to five-year plan. Five-year plan because in a liberalized economy, there cannot be directive centralized planning. There cannot be directive centralized planning. Planning must necessarily be decentralized and indicative. Planning must necessarily be decentralized and indicative because most of the investment in the economy come from private sector. Private sector. That's all, later on we will tell indicative planning, what is this. So, let's take role of Niti Ayub as cooperative competitive federalism. Niti Ayub has a unique distinction, and it is one of its core characteristics. It is one of its core characteristics that it is an instrument of, it is an instrument of cooperative and competitive federalism. In fact, it is one such institution which has meant which has marked the beginning of remaking of Indian federalism. Remaking of Indian federalism. Federalism. Along with G S T Council and progressive role of Finance Commission. Finance Commission. Its inherent characteristics is to promote cooperative federalism. Cooperative federalism as its structure is, its structure as. is its structure, as structure consisting of Team India headed by Prime Minister, Team India headed by Prime Minister, Governing Council, Governing Council consisting of PM, some union ministers, members of NITI Aayog, chief ministers, union, administrators of union territory. They take decision through deliberation, discussion and consensus. Deliberation, discussion and consensus. Then subgroup panel, subgroup panel which is, which consists of chief ministers and headed by one chief minister. Headed by one chief minister. Therefore, therefore, the inherent structure of NITI Aayog itself gives opportunity to states, gives opportunity to states for their representation, voices, concerns, representation, voices, concerns, concerns. Hence they feel, they feel, or they have rather, rather, they feel that they are being recognized as a stakeholder. They are being recognized as stakeholder. That was not with Planning Commission. NITI Aayog has also taken following steps so far, following major steps so far. First, on the recommendation of chiefs, on the recommendation of subgroup panel, subgroup panel, centrally sponsored schemes were restructured to the level of state satisfactions. Centrally sponsored schemes were restructured to the level of state satisfaction. Second, it has devised many, it has devised several indices for performance measurement, health index, education index, innovation index, women empowerment index, ease of living index. Such indices promote competition. Such indices promote competition among states. Next, since it has to promote evidence-based policymaking, since it has to promote evidence-based policymaking. Hence, it also, it also evaluate schemes, programs implemented by states, implemented at state level and the best practices, the best practices are highlighted and promoted of a state to other states. A kind of sub-nationalism, sub-nationalism. Sub-nationalism comparative study. Comparative public administration if you remember. Next, it works as a think tank to states and also tenders advice, tenders advice. Next. Smart city, smart city initiative promotes competition among states. Next aspirational districts initiative, aspirational districts initiative promotes cooperative competitive federalism at bottom level, bottom level, among districts, among states. Hence, NITI Aayog as an institution, NITI Aayog as an institution has earned, earned in a very short span of time, in a very short span of time. What is the line?
And NITI Aayog as an institution has earned in a very short span of time.
Span of time. Name and fame, name and fame for being the most important instrument of, most important instrument of cooperative and competitive federalism in India. So this is what, this, in criticism we will write ki what it is not able to do. Let's write that. Role of NITI Aayog as think tank. Role of NITI Aayog as a think tank and performance so far. As a think tank, it has to, it has to carry out research, analysis, publish reports and tender advice to government, tender advice to government. So that the government is over, able to overcome, overcome policy challenges, policy challenges and can promote rapid transformation for building new India. Rapid transformation for building new India. It has submitted several reports, reports including three-year section, action plan, five-years strategy agenda. Reports on almost all policy matters, policy matters related to science and technology, infrastructure, PPP, PPP, innovation, artificial intelligence, digitization, transportation, etcetera. It's the role of NITI Aayog which has helped. It is the role of NITI Aayog which has helped for devising following policy strategies, policy strategies like first rebooting of PPP sector, rebooting of PPP sector. And it has also devised various types of PPP, various types of PPP, also known as customized PPP, customized PPP types. Customized PPP types like for port, ports, health, education, housing, housing development, etcetera. See when we devise PPPs types for a specific sector, so that is called also customized PPP types. It is a new development so, new development in the sense ki I was reading some when I taught the October base so I had further some other studies so, nowadays there is a demand for customized PPP types, sector-specific PPP types. It has also devised sector-specific PPP types in terms of these sectors. Let's write next second point. Right, it has devised innovative schemes. It has helped, it has helped formulating innovative, innovative schemes like Ayushman Bharat, Ayushman Bharat Swaksh Bharat Mission, Swaksh Bharat Mission. At Nirbar Bharat, At Nirbar Bharat. Next, in consultation with RBI, in consultation with RBI, it has been very instrumental in promoting digitization of Indian economy. I know it is fast but you have to write it, no option. In consultation with RBI, it has helped, helped, it has been instrumental in promoting digitization of Indian economy. Indian economy. Next. It has been helping government in the field of artificial intelligence, artificial intelligence. Intelligence. Next. It has also, it has also provided inputs for formulating, formulating form bills, form bills for bringing radical reforms, radical reforms. Next, it has helped government devise subtle innovation mission, subtle innovation mission. Startup, stand-up, startup, stand-up, promotion of entrepreneurs, promotion of entrepreneurial developments. Therefore, it has to its credit, it has to its credit in five years, in five years, some good reports, some good reports and devising of schemes, programs, policies which are very innovative and transformative. Innovative and transformative. Transformative. So said, all said done, now we will take criticism. Further you can write of your choice but I don't think that more than that you will be able to write but anyhow, the good you may not realize this, the fact but although we don't need to appreciate also but it's, it's so many development when I say that it demands lots of study, lots of efforts and because any one article will not give you any such fact. And it is in a piece mail it is written, some people write some other way and those kind of articles are also not accessible to candidates because since we get the habit of reading our research papers. So our artificial intelligence in phone accordingly responds. So this is how, which kind of things you watch, see on your phone, accordingly this artificial intelligence responds. Fortunately on my phone I get lots of this type of papers every day. Right, so this is also benefit of artificial intelligence. Anyhow, so let's write on this next what we are saying criticisms, criticisms of NITI Aayog. Since it has also completed five years hence it is considered also appropriate to evaluate its performance, evaluate its performance. There are some reports related to evaluation of NITI Aayog including Rajya Sabha Channel, Rajya Sabha Channel debating on completion of two years, four years of NITI Aayog. Jab two years bhi complete hu tha to bhi unhone debate kia tha. Jab four years hu tha to bhi hu tha debate. That is how you should know that. Anyhow, let's write further. It means there are so many views behind giving, writing few lines. There are so many things behind that. So, let's write. It has been criticized for following factors. It has been criticized for following factors. First, on the one hand it promises for decentralization, bottom-up planning, bottom-up planning and having non-executive powers, non-executive powers but on the other hand, it itself has centralizing, centralizing characteristics like it is headed by Prime Minister, reports to Prime Minister, members are appointed by Prime Minister and its office is in pre-PMO. Its office is in PMO. Next. It has more rhetorics, less objectivity like new public administers. Like new public administers that radical in orientation but less in action, less in action that it has failed to first establish a process of planning, process of planning even for prospective planning, a system of bottom-up planning, a system of bottom-up planning. And without a system of bottom-up planning, planning has become, planning has has been in segments, in segments. Uska Hindi bahut hi bura hota hai chithro chithro me. Planning is in segments. PSC ne pucha hai kya kar sakte hai. Toh we have to ask this question also to you. Next, means next point. NC Saxena. So NC Saxena, next member of planning commission has sharply criticized, criticized Niti Ayog. He says he is not happy with Niti Ayog, thik hai koi baat. He says he is not happy with Niti Ayog performance. We bahut hi recent article. Not happy with Niti Ayog because of its first lack of independence as think tank. Think tank. It has remained pro-government. See he is criticizing that, toh hume koi tension nahi hai, aapko likhne se koi problem nahi hai. Right, Government of India Examiner or NC Saxena samjhaa pers. Right, so. What, it lacks independence and it has adopted pro-government approach. But a think tank characteristic is, a think tank characteristic sits. Maintain its independence. Second, the quality of research is not of high standard. Quality of research is not of high standard, rather they are old outdated data. And it is also dependent on other research institutions. Instead carrying itself research. Its self-research. Its deputy means vice chairman, its vice chairman does not enjoy freedom. Freedom. Unlike deputy chairman of planning mission. Planning mission. Next point, but now NC Saxena ends next. It is criticized for lack of recognition to deputy chairman. Although he is given, he is given the status of a cabinet rank minister. Which means he should be invited in cabinet meeting. Cabinet meetings. But Pankaria was not invited even in a single cabinet meeting. He felt frustrated. Frustrated. And it is considered one such factor although not officially approved for his resignation. For his quitting Niti Ayog. So ye bhi sab. P A N A G A R I A. Pankaria. Mister should know that deputy chairman means the planning commission or Niti Ayog. It is generally when you give a cabinet rank status so he is supposed to have, he attained the cabinet meeting, he will not have a voting right. But deputy chairman did this person, so the person should go and attend the meeting. He should be invited in cabinet meeting but when he was not invited so he felt ignored, sidelined. Because cabinet meeting is very crucial and he is supposed to let's say that work for socio-economic transformation and what is cabinet decision or he will influence cabinet decision. And if he is not invited so although he let's say that did that they do not speak in public, they don't want to tarnish their own image and future possibility of government association. So they will say that you I have to complete my degree in Columbia University. Toh fir aaye kyu the ya phir aap? Right, anyhow, usse taras urjit patel ne bola, it is my personal decision. Then this is how, so they will, they are so humble people that they will not go for mud-slinging etc. But this is how you know that government adopted, see you cannot adopt that kind of approach. See institutions should not be independent but when what is think tank? What is the think tank matlab kya hota hai? Toh fir personal secretary rakho. Right, think tank means if you research something, research ka toh matlab hai, research means scienticism. Scienticism means objectivity. Nai toh research mat karo na, survey karo. Right, so you have to understand that think tank, they, the institution is not, we are telling that it should be independent, it is executive body but means staff agency but the reports that you submit, the research that you carry, suppose you carry the research, let's say Elton me ho, hadan experiment. They did not know initially that what is going to happen. They did not know initially what is going to happen that social factors or psychological factors will be responsible. Otherwise first experiment me hi unhone bank wearing experiment kia huwa tha, chaar experiment kya sirf huwa tha. So suppose but they have to confirm to someone, when they have to confirm to someone so they will lose independence in research. Right, so they cannot give the objective, so you have to understand two different things, we are not saying that Niti Ayog should be an independent institution. No, it is the extended arm of the government but the institution should whatever it suggests to the government, that should be let's say objective, this we are saying. Let's write next. It has been criticized for, criticized for not evaluating, evaluating government policies, programs, programs especially in some important sectors. Important sectors. One is employment. Employment has remained one of the most important issue. It's one of the most important issues in recent times but it has not submitted any research paper or report on either generation of employment or loss of employment. Which was also accepted by its vice chairman. That Niti Ayog has not been able to address this problem. This problem. Next, it has also been criticized for criticized for one-size-fit-all. One-size-fit-all approach. Fit-all approach on some schemes and programs. Schemes and programs like beti bachao, beti padhao. Kerala Chief Minister criticized for one-size-fit-all approach. Next, centrally sponsored schemes although were restructured. Restructured but according to a recent record, still India has two hundred eleven centrally sponsored schemes. Same NC Saxena article writes like that. Two hundred eleven centrally sponsored schemes. Next. Although it promotes cooperative federalism. Cooperative federalism but it has been found that how there is on the other hand conflictual federalism. Conflictual federalism. That the states, states adopting a different view from center. A different view from that of center. That of center. They face discrimination by center. Next. As an institution it still lacks capacity. As an institution it still lacks capacity. Like planning commission. To play a substantial role. Play a substantial role. Through research analysis and maintaining high standards in its research. Anyhow, so fifteen years, what we could say? This yes, seven years agenda, strategy agenda it gave, it is like a modal answer. Right, this is how should know that, if you Googleize and type the PDF, get the PDF file, you will get it. That is how it is, it will write first education, then it will write problems. Then it will write what has been done, abhi kya steps lea gaya, right, then it will say way forward. So all let's say that topics will be like way forward, so we told that day, that year, that see all students can learn how to write GS answer. Right, so you can prepare your topics also by that report in GS, it is very helpful. So that is how, because they deal with all those sundry sectors, so that way we can tell about weaknesses, criticisms of Niti Ayog, then should Niti Ayog incorporate some good practice of planning. So finally we will finish it, let's, what do you think? Yes.
Niti Ayog has, like as far as I understand, it follows the principle of centralized planning and decentralized implementation. So would it be correct to criticize it on its, that basic fundamental?
No, it does not have centralized planning. Right, and there is no decentralized implementation because let me tell you that first it is not responsible for implementation, I don't know from what perspective you are talking this way. There is no centralized planning. Because there is no system of planning. First, national development agenda is not a plan, you should know that, it is an agenda let's say that, it is a perspective plan you can say, very thin loose guideline you can say that, this way. So there is no planning at such, that is how. Right, that's why it is being said that you must have certain system of planning. So it is decentralized implementation you are saying, so it is because it is not responsible for implementation, so others are responsible for implementation, so implementation will be done by ministry, departments, states, local bodies. That way, so seeing this that it is centralized planning to some extent it can be considered as we told that in case of it plans itself and then it is implemented. Plans in the sense whatever the things it plans. In case of three years action plan and five years agenda. But it is not its fundamental characteristics. To write, it is centralized planning and decentralized implementation. Right, rather it is decentralized planning, we have a decentralized planning, bottom-up planning. It is known for bottom, its fundamental characteristics is bottom-up planning. But how it is, so tomorrow we will tell that how you say bottom-up planning means what? Right. So. I don't think we should write this. Right, is it clear? See there are different views and this is how we can say that to have a very informed view is very difficult. And let, because people let's say that again we will tell that advance lots of your information you need, lots of different perspectives you need. Then you can have a view on that. And since we have been, since two thousand fifteen itself we have been teaching it, tracking it. So in fact we taught in the two thousand fifteen itself, when it was created that, that year itself there was let's say debate on this. What type of planning it is, Niti Ayog role it sectors. And now you have so many people talking, NK Singh talking, Vijay Kilker talking, NC Saxena talking. Now NK Singh and Vijay Kilker they are pro-government. They are part of the government think tank and even they have criticized. In fact, now time is going but tomorrow I will also tell. Right, one more, two more criticism will be there, you should know that Piyush Goyal, Nitin Gargari, they have also criticized Niti Ayog. Right, so things are now emerging let's say when five years to complete. Nitin Gargari ne bola ki apne area me raho, apne daire me raho, sorry to say, matlab proper language me bola hoga unhone. Basically on motor vehicle, let's say that. So in that Niti Ayog was, the way Kamal Nath told that, shut up, you are just armchair advisor. If you remember we told that time, so this is how let's say then Piyush Goyal has told that government will not agree. Not all agree with your policy advice, your perspective. Right, this is Piyush Goyal's statement, yesterday I was getting, before I had no such information. So when you go look into this, so when you formulate a particular view there is a risk also. Because you have to be very informed, there should be certain basis for a view. Right. So let's finish here, let's take tomorrow further. And tomorrow we will take also district administration.